Welcome everyone to the June 21st zoning board of adjustment meeting for the town of Barrington. I will ask that we call the meeting to order and those of you who would like to participate, join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do a roll call attendance members. Tracey Hartikoff present.
Paul Chigado present.
Cheryl Hawkins present. Alexandra Samaco present.
Thank you. Our staff member, our zoning administrator, Donald Huckins, and our planner for the town of Barrington, Vanessa. Yes, thank you. Long day. We have a request to move for C forward as our action items. Because there will be a request for continuance. Is everyone in agreement with that?
Yes.
Very good. So I'm going to ask the representative for P and P real estate management to come forward.
Tony Bassow, Keach Nordstrom, representing the applicant. My client's plane was delayed and he can't get here. So I want to ask to be table to the next meeting if possible.
Which would be July 19th, 2023 at 7:00 PM. Do we have on file authorization for Mr. Bassow to represent P and P? What agency do you work for?
Nope, he's my client.
I see that the engineer and survey was that I don't say that he has the right to. So our options are to. Yeah, but there is no.
I wonder, was it his meeting?
The option would be for the board to reschedule. As opposed to you making requests. So I would request that the board allow a reschedule to the July 19th, 2023 meeting.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. The board has made the motion that in the absence of the law, we'll reschedule it. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's unfortunate.
Definitely neighborhood. Anytime, anytime.
Well, I drove down the road. It was not a pleasant experience.
For anybody that's online, just hear the case. For the. 11 dash 6, we are 23. Dash the variance. Also flower drive as they continue to the July and keep meeting at 7:00 AM. There's a lot of background.
Next. Very good. Up next for action items is case 234 dash 6 dash B backslash SD. OA dash 23, a variance for owners Joseph Sweeney, request by applicant for a variance from Article 4, section 4.1.1. Table 2 to allow a front setback of 27.8 feet and 19.5 feet where 40 is required for both. At 14 Kelly Lane, map 234 lot 6 in the Village zoning district, but I have either the owner or the owner's representative come forward. The zoning board of adjustments for the town Barrington typically has five members presenting. We at this time have four seated members as one of our members has moved south. Should you choose to have your case heard, three votes out of the four would either approve or deny a request for variance, but you have the right to continue your case till the time that there are five seated members. It is entirely up to you. Very good then. Please proceed.
Well, we have. Present, we have single white trailer on the site. There is an addition to that and the edge of the addition comes within 27 feet. Violating setback by the spending system for many years. The size of property is 1.7 acres roughly, but there is a great deal of wetlands around there and to move the. Proposed structure away from the road would impact the wetlands. So what we have is essentially an elevated structure. We'd like to destroy that with a rectangular structure that fills in the area. The top part is yell, it's calling. That the design is marked on our, on our survey.
There's five price period filed in the form of zoning variance. Could you go over those five price areas?
You guys are welcome to sit down, make yourself comfortable.
Wait for a while to go through these cases.
You can read off like that.
I don't want special conditions to this, but that the literal enforcement of the ordinance will result in unnecessary hardship to the applicant as defined under applicable law. Existing footprint has limited building area. There's not much direction we can go. We can go. Well, as I said, to go back, it is to impact. The wet zone, go to the left or to the right is going to look at the. Granting this variance would be consistent with the spirit of the ordinance. Yes, because we have a hardship in front of us. And I'd treat granting the variance will not result in dimin- in diminution.
But I'll do that.
Diminution.
Diminution.
Thank you very much.
Diminution.
It will not decrease the brand of property values in any way. In fact, our desired improved lot will improve property values. Granting the variance would do substantial justice, yes, by improving the property value and erecting a habitable accommodation. The present time, the, the structure is unlivable. It's over 50 years old. It's. Granting this variance would not be contrary to the public interest. I don't see any way that it would be. It will increase our tax base and increase our taxes. Which will benefit the town.
And anything else we should know in relation to this case, either following state regularity or in reference to the history?
The town regulations. But if you read on the 975. It says an existing building within the Bappa area may be repaired or replaced by the newer repaired structure. The new government service will not extend further than the original foundation. He's trying to stay almost exactly at that line. I mean, anything is almost be more prudent to give a more set back, give more. He was always asking for the minimum because the vast majority. Of the impact that already exists, he has a legal right to build on anyway. So it's just a little corner that he's asking about the rest of it already. People see a need place on that.
Any questions, comments, concerns from the board, the applicant, before I open up public comment?
I have a couple. How long has it been vacant? The one that's there? Two years probably. And you're replacing it with. Something that doesn't, you're going back on a slab?
Yes, what they want to put in there is a double line.
And the, the existing slab is, you could use part of that?
There's no slab there. We're going to.
Oh, there is no slab there. Okay. And I already checked on your septic. With the zoning administrator earlier today, I understand you had another septic design that's been approved for three bedroom.
That's correct.
That needs to be installed only if the two bedroom you have fails.
Correct.
Okay. I think that's all I have.
Questions, comments, concerns?
No.
Going to open this up to public comment. Is there anyone who has business in the town of Barrington, resides in the town of Barrington? Works in the town of Barrington that may like to speak either for or against this case? And if you would, please come to the podium, state your name and your address.
Hi, my name is Rick Sonish. My wife and I are children here in St. Andrews. We. We actually want to support him to do this. It's good for us as well as him and, and. I personally think it's good for the town as well. I mean, we live down a private way that the town is never going to have anything to do with other than. But this is, I think this will be a great movement to our, to our neighborhood. And it's because you have Joe back in the neighborhood.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to speak for or against the case? Anyone online, if you would like to speak for or against the case, you can use your mouse. Mouse over your computer screen. You'll see in your upper right hand corner that there's a hand. It's a phrase underneath. Click on that. We'll know that you'd like to speak. All right. Good. So at this time, I'd like to close public comment in relation to the case. No other questions, comments, or concerns. I would feel comfortable making a motion to approve the variance for case 234 dash 6 dash B backslash SD OA. Dash 23 dash VAR for owner Joseph Sweeney. Because the case meets all of the criteria that special conditions do exist in such that literal enforcement would be a hardship for the owner. That granting the variance would be consistent with the spirit of the ordinance, that granting the variance would not result in the.
Diminution.
Say it one more time.
Diminution.
Diminution. Surrounding property values. Can't we just say three sits? And that granting the variance would do substantial justice in this case. Granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest here in Barrington. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Alex. Roll call vote. Hartikoff, yes.
Paul, yes.
Cheryl, yes. Alex, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, good answer.
If you replace.
As soon as I looked at that one. Things I looked at that one. It's like this one.
Oh, yeah.
To do this.
Next up is case 253 dash 22. Dash RC dash 23 dash VAR. This is in relation to 14 Winkley Pond Road LLC, members Clinton, Jen Bro and Daniela Mobius. Am I saying that correctly? Okay. Request by the applicant for a variance from Article 3, section 3.3.5 parentheses 3, parentheses A. To permit residential use within 500 feet from the center line of Caleb Highway, also known as 125. At 14 Winkley Pond Road, map 253, lot 22 in the regional commercial zoning district. Please feel free to join us upfront. And as you saw with the prior case, we have to present to you, there were four seated members tonight, not five. You certainly could make the decision to continue your case until there were five seated members. An approval or denial of your case would require consistency with three seated members tonight. Would you like to continue with your case tonight?
Maybe.
Okay. The case, they'd like to proceed. You can go ahead and you have also five criteria that you would need to present, please.
My name is Daniella Verdia. I was given before, 14 Winkley Pond Road. We use this Clint Gendrow and as you stated, we are representing our request to grant a variance of section 3.3.5. What we would like to do is renovate the existing legal single family home on the property into a two family. Our goal, and I don't know if this particular point is something that your board cares about, but one of the goals is to provide a single level living opportunity on the ground floor. And then to create a second unit above. And I'm sure you all know a lot about the backgrounds of the property. The parcel contains a farmhouse from around the 1700s. There's a timber frame barn as well on the property and a shed. And as stated before, it is an existing legal residence. That is in compliance with the RC district regulations as outlined in section 5 through 2 along with reform instructors currently. We're proposing to maintain that residential use and a two family is in the same family as. Is also in the same IRC building code. We're not changing the type of the building if it's two but units if known near. And. So that also pertains to section 5.3 in regards to non-conforming uses. The parcel measures 136,382 square feet, which exceeds the minimum lot size requirements in TESO's 2 of Article 4 in terms of the dimensional requirements for two dwelling units on the site. So we made sure that that was in accordance to the requirements. And the proposed modifications, the renovation that we wish to do, do not involve any enlargement or expansion or alterations that would decrease compliance from what it currently is. And I just wanted to point out here. So we have a survey here and this is Route 125. This is Winkley Pond Road here. And there is a required setback from Caleb Highway of 75 feet for structures. This is an existing structure that's been there well before the zoning ordinance was put into place. So we're. And here, so here's the house and the additional variance or the relief that we're seeking from the variance is from the central line of Route 125 to 500 feet. The ordinance does not allow residential uses. So we understand that we currently have this existing legal use, but because we are proposing to change it to a duplex. This is why we are here with you today. And other points in the code, so. We're not changing the footprint aside from constructing two unenclosed stoops, which are permitted under section 5.2.1. We also verified to make sure that the required clearances are adhered to in regard to the setbacks. And the main change that we're proposing is we're, we're planning on installing a new septic system. What is there currently is. Not anything that you feel means.
Very old.
I know that place.
And I guess the other thing regarding the single floor living opportunity, one of the goal is to have Clint's parents move down. From up north. And so it's a great opportunity to have one apartment on a lower level where there's, you know, steps. And. Regarding the justification for variances. Special conditions. It is an existing structure. Which we cannot very easily move away from that 500 foot point. And I guess the other thing that makes the site very unique is the fact that it's very narrow. It has two frontages. So in, in that itself, it is very unique. We do want to recognize that the lot is known to regional commercial. And, but because this is an existing residence, this has some historic value. I feel like there's. You know, with the barn, with the existing historic farm and everything else around it, we really wanted to preserve that. And the structure itself does not lend itself to commercial uses. It has low ceilings. Accessibility would be very challenging as well. And we feel that granting the variance would be consistent with the spirit of the ordinance. The ordinance does speak to existing non-conforming uses. And. I, I guess additionally, we are proposing on renovating, updating code requirements, energy efficiency. And health and safety, we're making the effort to install good insulation, high quality windows or sound. Mitigation, all of these things. So we, we are hoping that this is, you'll find this is in alignment with the ordinance. Additionally, we do not think this will result in the diminution. Of the surrounding property values. We are putting in. A good amount of effort into renovation and repairs and. And just providing nice units there that are to code. And preserving a little piece of history. And then. And. Granting the variance would do substantial justice. I would say there's no conceivable gain to the public to deny the variance requested. It's, it enables us to renovate, eagles and help and really maximize the use of the structure. And. Yeah. Just wanted to also show that with renovating this and changing from a single family to a two family, there is not going to be a lot of change visible on the exterior. This shows an existing photograph and here, this is one change. We would like to have another doorway from the lower unit to the yard on one side so that there's yard access. And then this is the facade facing Winkley Pond Road. It's basically going to be the same. New windows. Paint, new roof, all of that. So that doesn't change. At some point, we'll, we'll likely. Demolish this exterior chimney that is quite asymmetrical because we're adding in a new heating system. And then on this side, which shows the photograph kind of facing the barn, there's the existing main entrance here. So here, this shows how there would be another entrance added. And this is that unenclosed stoop. That is a change to the footprint of the building, but yet is outside of the required setbacks set forth in the, in the ordinance. And. One more. Number five, variance, granting variance would not be contrary to public interest. So while the site is known as commercial, along with the conversion of the existing house from duplex. Main changes, existing character, historical character of the lot and. We feel like that also it would just let the need to put in the way it currently is. So, and I was saying, they do, they're still thought in the area. So those, those are the pieces that we want to.
Could you repeat what your, what your hardship is?
Oh, well, but the hardship is that we have an existing structure. That we, we cannot move. And I think it's a matter of, it is a very, it's a large, single family home right now. The way it is, it's almost a six bedroom house. So to really make that practical in the location where it is with that kind of square footage. It, it doesn't really calculate for a large, single family home.
What is square footage of the property now?
Right around 2,500 square feet. Floor is.
Floor is 2,500.
Hundred change.
Oh, 1,200. Okay. Tom, can I continue to ask any questions?
So just very quickly, I was going to ask, does staff have anything they need to reflect for the public and the board regarding any state regulations or any historical?
Basically, I could reinforce what was said about the legally existing use. It's allowed to continue with a single family residential home. Also, the expansion of. Non-conforming use is not allowed. That's why they're here about it because it's really is. Set up a one family. Then if you look at state statutes, if they did an accessory dwelling, if they did accessory dwelling upstairs, the state trumps on the town's regulation because it says that residential use is allowed to have to allow the. Accessory dwelling unit. But the requirement of, I would say this would qualify as an accessory dwelling unit, but the requirement for an accessory dwelling unit is the occupants have to live in one of them. So when this is going to be rental, if it wasn't going to be rental, they were going to live in one of them. They wouldn't even have to come here. I would give them the permit to make the change on the building. So I guess the point I'm trying to make is what they're doing kind of conforms, even though it's like just barely not conforming, if you know what I'm saying?
What, what's the maximum ADU square footage?
1,000 feet if it's connected in the town of Barrington.
1,000. You're talking 12,500.
Well, to be clear, we're not asking for an ADU.
Right. Let you know that they could just make it straight up by writing if it wasn't.
I was just going to suggest you move in and make it an ADU.
Understood. At this time, is, is there public comment either for or against the case? And if there is, please feel free to come forward to the podium, state your name and your address and give testimony to your support or your objection.
So my name is Brian Weedon. I live at 63 Winkley Pond Road. So I'm like a nod of butter, but I live on the road that they're developing. And I like to say, since they moved in, that the improvements of events, you know, they've done a great job. They've cleared up the whole field. They've mowed the fields and, and you know, they're the kind of people who we want, you know, living in our neighborhood. They're doing a great job as far as, you know, your, your daughters and everything. Every day they come to work and they do, do, do all these works. So I'm impressed.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to present? Hi there.
Hi.
Name it.
My name is Richard Ward. I'm from Portsmouth, New Hampshire. Me and my wife actually bought the property on the, on the pond. My, my grandmother was born in that house with three sisters. So, but I, I think this is a great idea and my family would approve of it. So, but you know, instead of letting it just go. So that's.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone online, if you'd like to speak for or against the case, please feel free to take your mouse, move it across your screen in the upper right hand corner. You'll see. You'll see a hand that says raise underneath. Click on that, let us know that you'd like to speak.
Sure. I don't see anybody that would like to speak for or against the application.
So at this time, we're going to close public comment and turn back to the board. Questions?
What condition is that barn in?
The barn is, it's surprisingly good and those probably the main reason. Well, this is more like a passion project for us, but the barn's in great shape.
It's an investment for you guys, right?
Well, we also bought the 97 acres of cultivated area that is...
Across the road, yeah.
And so we, you know, we have goals and dreams of staying in Barrington and doing something fun and cool. I mean, there's so many possibilities. But the barn is surprisingly straight and square. I, we've cleaned it out. It looks amazing. I haven't surveyed it yet, but it's...
Everything helps that.
Yeah, well, it's not new by any means, but it's...
But you wouldn't knock it down.
No, 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 we want to, no, we absolutely want to keep the barn. Yeah. Yeah. So, you know, the ridge is nice and straight and...
The way I understand the zoning regulation, John, correct me if I'm wrong, and Vanessa, if you were to put some sort of commercial enterprise there, you could do this without even coming in front of this board, right? Have you considered doing something in the barn?
It needs a lot of, it needs work in order to make it usable if it's going to have any type of public interaction. It's not there yet. There's low beam heights that would need to be fixed. We do have, you know, we do have goals for the property. It's zoned commercially. I mean, the, anything that we would grow on the, on the Beauty Hill acreage side, currently the way the easements written, would need to be sold not from that property, but out of the 14 Winkley Pond Road. And so, you know, we definitely can envision vegetable stand. And we got big dreams and it's all just dreams, but interact with other farmers who, you know, lease sales. I mean, there's a lot of neat opportunity there. And but we got to start somewhere. And then that's where, you know, the house is, you know, it's just our first step in what could be many other places. But...
I understand what you're trying to do, but it's just the zoning regulation just allows you to do it. If you do, how substantial and comfortable does it have to be? I mean, this doesn't have to be, or does it? Tell me.
Well, what it says is mixed use. So if it's mixed use, a legally existing residential structure can be used as part of your mixed use. It doesn't define exactly what has to be. But if you have a house that, that basically, because they have a house that's in usable condition with a little bit of renovation, so they could use that. But they work on getting the barn, they're trying to establish the business. When they can do that, they're planning, my understanding if you're talking to them is they plan on coming back in to do the mixed use. It's just to keep the house usable and to try to keep things moving forward while they working on getting there. Because they would have to go in front of the plan and get right to mixed use.
And the other challenge too, if I may, is we did look at it. And I mean, there is, it's in surprisingly good shape for timber frame barns in the area of that age. But it to make it into a commercial code project, the amount of money needing to be invested is definitely huge, as well as parking regulations and then really going through site plan review, really engineering everything, making sure that we have the parking counts required for, to serve the body.
Eventually, you do want to do that.
It would be perhaps, yeah, it would be nice to do that. I just don't know how feasible it is to jump into something like it.
Okay. Okay. So you don't have any substantial plan to do a commercial, a commercial enterprise of any sort on that lot?
At the moment, we do not.
Well, the agricultural thing he mentioned with selling a product, that would be, that would be the requirement. But if you start bringing people into a retail establishment, all those building requirements for that barn, when you come into a place which, you know, like you would any other retail establishment, which is easy, you got them all along.
Yeah, because it's still a barn. You know, it's a real barn. I've seen it.
I mean, yeah, it's, I'm, I'm an architect and I'm currently working with some of your flushes on renovating another barn in Guy. And I've just been seeing the, the engineering and the amount of updating that needed to go into that. That particular barn, we had to basically say, okay, we have to demo it and build all new. This one, I feel like the frame is in much better shape. But still, usually what happens is you end up having to put in a new foundation underneath. And then you end up reframing the floor because it doesn't need code. And so it's just one of those things where we looked at, we're like, oh, that would be amazing to do that immediately. But it's not.
It sounds like what you're talking about doing with that barn is, is turning it into a full public, open to the public commercial is what you're describing. I don't think you need to do that to, to have a commercial aspect to that property. I don't think you need to, to make this barn homeless, right?
Right.
I mean, you just need to sell something.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we also need to start growing something too. And that's, you know, that field that's out there needs a lot of...
It takes time to...
It needs a lot of, it's been depleted. So we've been working with, we've had so many people out there in terms of what we can do to get the life back into that hay field for agricultural use. And no one's given us the impression that we're going to be growing anything great over the next four or five years. So it's definitely a long-term vision for us to get that back on track.
So my question is simply that the unnecessary hardship that you're stating is that in order to utilize the property going forward, having the ability to transform the current structure into a two-family versus a single-family would allow you future growth? I mean, is, are you saying, I guess I'm asking you to restate your hardship.
The, I guess I would say the, the existing condition of the site, the historic structure, wanting to do the best we can to really preserve a historic structure, which counter-intuitively actually costs more often than knocking something down and just putting a cookie cutter structure.
Understood.
It's something that requires a little more creativity to utilize the space in a very space-efficient and kind of unique way. And to not be able to do that would be really unfortunate. But I guess the other thing to do is looking towards a future there. And the two-family seems to be very much in alignment with the overall vision of zoning in that area as well.
Are you building the interior structure to the downstairs unit that you talked about, AVA? Are you building it with the...
We're not putting in a ramp in per se, but the clearances are going to be basically type B in terms of door widths. We'll definitely make sure that you can, you can access the bathroom. It's a little bit bigger so that there's some turning.
For people online, AVA, Americans with Disabilities Act. I hate it when people use that. Okay. Any other questions, comments, concern that exploration from the board?
Can you flip back to your map for a moment? Because ultimately what you're really asking for is regarding that setback from the center of 125. Is that marked anywhere on here? You know, I know it's a narrow property. I did drive by it, but where would that put you if you had it? It would put you across the street. Okay.
None of, none of all, I think it's...
Okay. That was a lovely question.
The extension of those two, how many, I, I'm not a builder, but how many additional feet are you coming out from those stoops that you've just started?
For this stoop?
By our regulations, legally existing non-conforming structures with that, those act, you can do an expansion up to eight feet. One is 15 feet remaining by regulations. So they wouldn't leave you to do that.
Give you just safe access into the house and another house.
Any other questions, comments, or concerns? Do I have a motion for...
I'd like to make a motion that we accept this variance. I agree that, let's see, we have to go through this. I think special conditions do exist. However, it would, this is an iconic structure in Barrington. We all know it's a Boraticek home, farm, and conservation easement. I think that granting this would be completely within the spirit of the ordinance because it's already, the structure's already there. It's already placed where it is. And they're just finding a better use for this rather than just let it sit there and rot. Or like she said, knock it down and put up something ugly. And it will not result in the diminution of property values because actually they're going to be updating it enough so that I think it's going to look better. I mean, I think it looks nice, but, you know, houses like that over time do deteriorate. And I believe that it would do substantial justice. They bought this property and this allows them to use it in a way that will benefit them and the town. And I don't think it would be contrary to the public interest at all. Because like I said, they're preserving an iconic historic home in Barrington, which I think is a lovely, lovely thing.
Okay. Do I have a second on that motion for acceptance?
One second.
Roll call vote, please.
Oh, Samoko, yes.
Cheryl Hawkins, yes.
I'm sorry, I can't see the hardship, no.
I think when I look at the overall package structure of the regional district and what you hope to accomplish, the fact that you're moving a family member into the bottom unit, I can't see that...
Is that part of the condition?
No. But the fact that the special conditions do exist, that federal enforcement would not allow you to continue to use the property from a commercial perspective, then I will be voting in favor of the motion. Then we will allow your...
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
I always love that place.
Next up.
Nothing wrong.
Your meeting minutes.
Oh, yeah.
They've all had a lot of time now to review. I thought they were short, but the pace was 23 minutes long.
Thank you, Walter.
Thank you.
A motion to approve meeting minutes for May 17th of 2023. I've read them in detail and would make that motion.
One, one take of correction, line 29 on the first page, to 20,015.
Oh, yeah.
You're a good thinker. With the amended recommendation, I'd like a second.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote.
Hi.
Hi.
Oh, such an order. I think you do that a lot of times and not pick up a second.
Right there with them.
I like to write and I do a portrait.
As information.
Now and then, it's kind of an interesting thing. I have to back over, I have to read it again and see another type of...
Workshop, they need the date to the June 29th, what's it covering? All the things.
Like, do we have it again? Is it like 91A again? I mean, if we're going to hear about right to know. We're all set.
It's like if you're new to the, to a board, it's kind of the same things that you've been seeing over and over, more like a refresher. Sometimes you pick up extra things with different speakers. But it's always like Stephen Buckley does a lot of the things with that issue.
This is an online course?
Okay.
I believe that you can reference that later too. As long as you'd like to sign up for it.
And the 29th is a Thursday, right?
Yes.
Oh, good, yeah.
It's concerned all day, I think it's like 8:40.
Oh, I've done, yeah, I've done this one, I'm going to call her.
How much does it pay?
It doesn't. And we don't reimburse you on it, do you?
John, this is the one that they used to do, that we used to go to every...
Thank you for the potential training opportunities. Any other business that needs to come before the board? No, I'll take a motion to adjourn if someone would like to make it.
I'll make it.
And I will second it. Motion to adjourn at 7:44 PM. Party Bob, bye.
Bye.
Bye.